Committee meeting of the Public Safety Committee. And we have an exciting meeting and a great agenda because we have incredible candidates for Police Commission. And I am joined by some great colleagues as well. Mike Bonin, good morning. Joe Buscayeno, Mitchell Farrell, good morning. And thank you all for coming this morning. We had it originally scheduled for 8:45 because it is special. So I appreciate everybody getting here this morning in Friday light traffic as we are about to enter a three-day weekend. With that, we're going to jump right into it. I had the honor and the privilege of sitting down with all of these candidates. And I will tell you, each and every one brings just an incredible experience and knowledge, a passion, enthusiasm, and spirit, a fresh one at that. We need that here in the city of Los Angeles. And it's great that we've got so many eager people civically engaged and have already done so much homework on this. I was blown away. I'm used to, in my experience, oftentimes, meeting with commissioners. They walk in and I say, "Well, what would you like to do or see in this commission?" And they said, "Well, we haven't really done the research yet." Each of these candidates walked in with all kinds of knowledge already. They're reading every manual, they're reading books, they've already had meetings with various people throughout the city. I don't think any of them have slept since they received the call, quite frankly, from the mayor and have been doing extensive research. And this is probably by far one of the most important commissions in the city of Los Angeles because public safety is a cornerstone and is the foundation, is the core function of local government. And so I know each and every one brings just so much to the table. And with that, without further ado, let's start off in order with Item One. Mr. Clerk.
Good morning, John White, City Clerk. Item One, Communication from the Mayor Relative to the Appointment of Ms. Sandra Figueroa Villa to the Board of Police Commissioners for the Term Ending June 30, 2017. They fill the vacancy resulting from the removal of Mr. Rafael Bernardino.
Come on up to the table. We'll put you in the hot seat.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And it was a pleasure meeting with you as well and hearing a lot about your life experience and your vision. And why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself and I'll just open it up to my colleagues for questions?
Well, for the last over forty years, I've been running and building a nonprofit that has grown from major gang problems in the Echo Park Northeast area. We have built, you know, way before intervention, prevention was funded by the city. That was what inspired parents to keep this agency going and really keep a place where kids can come and hang out and get to know each other. Rival gangs would come there. And so because of that input and the parents being involved in doing this needs assessment, now we've grown to a full-blown Children, Youth, and Family Services Center. So we integrate a lot of those kids into mainstream kinds of counseling programs where the Echo Park Family Resource Center, we do Rampart Grid, where the prevention piece, we have mental health contracts and Department of Children and Family Services contracts and primarily to keep kids in home and not get removed and put into cluster care. We have many success stories, unfortunately, kids that are now grown. We've seen generations where families really prosper. The gang members went to college, have their bachelor's degrees. You see the next generation of kids, UCLA, and then their kids. So we know that prevention intervention really works in this city. And one of the main things that we had in the beginning of our, my career there actually, was that we did not have good relationships with LAPD. Back then, because of the work we did in our relationship with gang members, LAPD didn't talk to us. We weren't trusted. But as we grew and I built relationships with police officers in Rampart and Northeast, individual police, we've been able to build solid, good relationships now. And I think LAPD has come a long way in police community relations. We still have a ways to go, and I really want to focus on that. Since I've been in this process now, I didn't realize LAPD is the most scrutinized department. They have eyes on them from everywhere. And it's almost like the public perception, they get away with everything. Really, they don't. It's just the public doesn't get that. And so as I go forward, I really would like to work on building those relationships and hopefully have the public see the police department. And we're not perfect, but it's become great. We want it better, the best. So that's where I see myself today.
Right, thank you. It sounds like you're describing the LAPD Council as well, so I appreciate that.
It's exciting. We're all new. It's a new day, and we don't want the same.
Yeah, thank you.
And I want to build a relationship with all the council members. And if you have, you'll have my cellphone number. Don't give it to your constituents, though. If you have my cellphone number, go ahead and give it to whoever you want.
We'll keep it private in this room. Can you just share it over the microphone? With that, we'll open it up to my colleagues for questions. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Figueroa, I'm really excited about you taking on this role as an upcoming police commissioner. Just last night, we had a gang homicide in San Pedro. And on the eve of making these elections and approving Mayor Garcetti's commissioners, I thought about you. I truly did. I read your bio and I thought about what you've done in the past of finding every way to prevent another gang homicide to occur in the city of Los Angeles. Some of these incidents occur way beyond our control, but to have you sit in this position, you have the knowledge and the abilities to bring people together. But most importantly, you have that passion to serve our kids in our city. And in the time I spent, a blessed career with LAPD, nearly fifteen years, I too shared your vision as well, to make sure that we include kids and teenagers in the problem-solving process. All I ask is, and we spoke offline on this, it's really important, and I'll share this with the rest of the commissioners, it's really important. In my time, nearly fifteen years with LAPD, I rarely saw a police commissioner in roll call. I encourage you to get out there, be with the men and women out in the field, get into black and white, do ride-alongs with sergeants so you hear what's happening on the ground. And I'm really excited about you taking on this role, again, specifically as Chair of the Gang Reduction Youth Development Committee. I'm really looking forward to working with you to continue your passion, your vision, in serving our kids in the city. Thank you.
And as we're both officers, we'll both offer to give you ride-alongs as well. It doesn't have to just be with a sergeant. Mike?
Ride with Joe, not with Mitch, just to be safe. You talked about trust, and you talked about how when you started, the LAPD had issues of trust with your organization because you did work with gang members and folks who were at risk. And you talked about how that relationship has changed, and now there is more trust. I'm interested in trust from the other direction, the community's trust and particularly young people's trust. Where would you say that that level of trust is now among young people and the families in your communities towards the LAPD?
I think it has to be strengthened. I think it's good in some, I did focus groups. I was on the Rampart Review Panel back then, and when some of those kids heard I was appointed to this commission, and those were some of the things they talked about. Although the police come to my agency, they interact with the kids, that police is fine. But it still needs to be strengthened. And I think for us, we really need to do some education in the community to really talk about how we can build those relationships in our community. Sometimes, there's going to be some that you're never going to win, but at least we know we went out there and we worked with these kids. So as much as it's better, it still needs work. I'm being really honest.
Thank you.
Good morning, Sandra. I just, first of all, want to compliment El Centro de Pueblo for your decades of incredible work in Echo Park beyond and in the 13th District. I have many, many friends who are service professionals at El Centro de Pueblo. And the work you've done in Echo Park over the years has been amazing. It's made a huge difference. And I know that we had a great working relationship back in the day, and I look forward to a great working relationship in the future. I'm a huge believer that social services, gang intervention work, saturating our communities with tools to give young people and not-so-young people at risk a way into the mainstream. I'm a huge believer in that. Conversely, I'm a huge believer in tools that law enforcement has to strongly discourage gang activity and keep people from joining gangs. And I would love to hear your thoughts on gang injunctions as a tool to help law enforcement do their work to make our communities safer. I know that there's a proposed injunction called the Glendale Corridor Injunction that will cover most of Echo Park and several neighborhoods in the 13th District. It's a very important tool for me, the city attorney and the mayor, that we all believe in. And I would just love to hear what your thoughts are on this proposed injunction.
I think that there's a lot of opposition, there's a lot of fear, there's a lot of concern. I know many kids that are on that list. I also know that there's many kids that should not be on that list today. And I also know that Mike Fewer, our city attorney, has really done a lot of homework to make sure that some of the concerns of the community are mitigated in revising the gang injunction. So if it goes forward, I am hopeful that you consider, as our council member, that we also, not just identify kids and serve them their injunction, but also if they haven't been involved in whatever they got on there to begin, it's easy to get on. They're identified, the name goes up, and they go in the system. Getting off is crucial. Lots of those members, former members that are on, they are, they're working, they're taking care of their families now, their kids are growing. This goes back many years. So I'm hopeful that at some point, we really work to get those kids off of that list. That has to be a priority. And then include prevention, intervention, and not just, and I understand it's a tool. I've spoke to many police officers, I talked to deputy chief, and they said it's one tool that we will be able to use. There's a handful of kids that are those that should be, I hate to use the word, but should be arrested and dealt with. But then there's a lot of others that don't really need to be served with the injunction. They need to be helped to get off that list.
I would just comment that I'm fully in support of the Sunset Clause that we're talking about in the off-ramp. That's hugely important to me as well, and I've had many meetings with the city attorney on this, and it's something we're on the same page about. I would disagree with you that it's easy to get on the list, though. To get on a list to be served an injunction actually takes work, and it takes some criminal activity. So we have to approach this, I think, with, from both sides. Provide the services, provide the exit ramp through social services, but also provide the tools to strongly discourage gang activity because we all know that it harms our neighborhoods. So I look forward to working with you on this issue and in terms of greater public safety across the 13th and beyond, so.
I do, too. We'll meet soon.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Joe?
Really good. Mr. Chair, if I can, on the issue of gang injunctions, and you know, the city attorney does create a pathway towards offering re-promoval on the gang injunction, but we're seeing that a number of these individuals are not taking advantage of it. So I'm asking if you just work with the city attorney on this issue. Perhaps the city attorney needs to promote it more, maybe simplify it so that we have more of those former gang members who now live a productive life and who are raising a family or putting food on the table, who are working so that we can get them off that list. So please, I ask that you should work that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And we welcome our councilwoman, Mary Martinez. Good morning. Thank you for coming this morning. Swat, did you have any questions?
I've just known Sandra for a long time. I've had the pleasure of working with her. And I think that the work that you do is very difficult. And so I applaud the fact that you're in a community. You've been there, you've actually have roots in that area. You know the families and the young people that unfortunately sometimes have trouble growing up, and so you've been very successful in turning some lives around, and I applaud you for that. So I think there needs to be a balanced approach to how we look at law enforcement. I believe that in some of our communities, unfortunately, our kids don't always have an easy path out. So you've dealt with those issues, and I applaud your nomination. So I look forward to supporting you in about an hour.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we'll see you at council as well. Okay? Well, we've already finished item number one, so we'll go ahead and note that for the file. Okay, thank you very much. And we'll, thank you. With that, without further ado, we'll open it up for public comment. We have no public comment cards, so we'll go ahead and close public comment.
You have one for one.
General public comment. And then we'll go ahead and open public comment on item two. And we'll take, if you've got any other cards for two, three, and four, we'll take all those items together. Okay, so two and three, we have two cards, and no other public comment cards are two, three, or four, so we'll take two and three. Arnold Sacks on items two and three.
Did you approve item one?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, yes, item one is approved without objection. That'll be the order. Mr. Sacks, good morning.
Yes, you're taking two items, you're getting a minute each item? Is this a new way to run these meetings now? I'm telling you, public, voters' rights, remember voters' rights. Anyway, item two refers to a stand-on, I guess, fracking. And yet, the County Board of Supervisors on Tuesday--
That's not on the item, so if, I'm not sure what schedule or agenda you're on.
Rules and government?
Wrong committee.
It says--
That's downstairs.
Item two--
Council chambers.
Relative to include the city's 2013-14 state legislative program--
No, wrong agenda.
This is public safety.
This is the public safety.
Rules and elections?
This is the public safety agenda.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, we'll go ahead and dismiss those comment cards then. Wrong committee, but that's okay. And we'll close public comment, then we have no cards for this committee for two, three, or four, so that'll conclude public comment on those items, and we'll go ahead and take item two.
Item two, Communication from the Mayor Relative to the Appointment of Ms. Kathleen C. Kim to the Board of Police Commissioners for the Term Ending June 30, 2014. They fill the vacancy resulting from the removal of Mr. Richard Drian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I enjoyed meeting with you as well and was very impressed, not only with your experience and what you've done in human trafficking and a lot of the leadership that you've taken in immigration law and immigration rights, but what you've done in the community and as a true leader and expert, and a lot of the vision and ideas that you had for the commission. But if you could, for public discussion, if you could just share with us a little bit about yourself and what you'd like to see done and your focus on this commission as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks so much for this opportunity to be here. I really am humbled to be amongst all of you and also my fellow candidates for commissioners. I'm blown away by the experience that I've had over the last couple of weeks, learning so much about local government and also the responsibilities involved with the police commission. Currently, I'm a law professor at Loyola Law School. I'm entering my seventh year there, so I've been there for six years. And before that, I was a civil rights lawyer. I practiced as a civil rights lawyer at Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights in San Francisco. I began this work addressing immigrants' rights and addressing the rights of human trafficking survivors. Actually, I guess before law school, that's sort of what prompted me to enter law school. I taught English to migrant farmworkers in the agricultural fields of western Michigan. And I observed horrendous working conditions, and that sort of inspired me to go to law school and pursue immigrants' rights work. Sure enough, when I was practicing and doing work addressing human trafficking, the Department of Justice ended up investigating forced labor conditions in those same fields, same agricultural fields in western Michigan. So I felt like things really came full circle. During law school, the Trafficking Victims Protection Act was passed. That's the chief federal law addressing human trafficking in the United States. So it has criminal sanctions as well as protective measures for human trafficking victims. So I developed a legal services project to implement that law. Right after law school, I launched that project at the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights. And it was the first legal services project in the nation to implement this law. And my focus was more specifically on the civil rights of trafficked persons. So I engaged in civil litigation on behalf of my clients, trafficked plaintiffs, to sue their human traffickers. And in doing so, I also built a network of social services for these survivors and also worked with law enforcement at different levels of law enforcement, both federal and eventually local law enforcement, when local law enforcement became more involved in investigating these kinds of cases. I also taught in an immigrants' rights clinic at Stanford Law School. And while I've been at Loyola, you know, I've continued to do this trafficking work more sort of on a technical expertise level, but I also supervise a live client immigration clinic at Loyola Law School, a new immigrants' rights clinic. And so my teaching and my practice and also my research is all focused, continues to be focused, on immigration, immigrants' rights, and human trafficking. And I'm really thrilled about the opportunity to serve on the police commission. What I hope to bring to the police commission is some perspective on how local policies affect the immigrant community. And I think that the guiding principle, of course, is public safety. And I'm definitely concerned about the community's trust in law enforcement to increase public safety on behalf of, especially of our undocumented residents. The laws that I've worked with have largely addressed undocumented immigrants and undocumented trafficked persons. And law enforcement is absolutely crucial to bringing justice for these individuals when they're victimized by perpetrators. And law enforcement is necessary to intervene and prosecute the perpetrators and to also access the rights and services that the law provides to these individuals. So I'm really looking forward to facilitating that kind of relationship and then also hoping to bring some kind of informed perspective on shaping policies and working with law enforcement to more effectively address the rights of undocumented immigrants, trafficked persons, et cetera.
All right, thank you very much. Colleagues, Mitch?
Just a comment, I think you're a wonderful appointee, and I congratulate you for stepping up and accepting this position. And I think you add perspectives that your future colleagues will appreciate, and certainly we will as well. And I'm particularly interested as well in the immigrant community and under-reporting of crime. So I look forward to working with you in that also. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of our core values in the LAPD is service to our communities, and that's to everyone, every community in the city of Los Angeles. With your knowledge that you bring forth to this commission, I think you're going to help continue that effort. And if you look at the crime reduction that this department has, I mean, incredible crime reduction numbers in the last several years, we think we owe that success not only to the men and women of the police department, but also to the police department's relationship with the community. To have, again, your expertise and your knowledge specifically in your line of work, I think you're going to add a lot of value and continue the success of crime reduction strategies with this police department. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. My own, you know, one of the biggest issues in my district is prostitution. And, you know, you constantly, I saw it on the campaign trail when I was running, but I actually see it every day because it exists in the neighborhood that I live in. So I'm going to look at the commission to try to work together and make sure that LAPD keeps this as a priority because it's a very huge concern and huge issue in areas like Sun Valley and Sepulveda along North Hills and Sherman Way, some of the busiest corridors, Lancashire and the Valley. So I'm glad you have this just great background on human trafficking, but we need to work together to make sure that some of these areas that have historically had this issue, we continue to work with LAPD to address it.
Thank you.
It's a priority for my district.
Thank you. I really look forward to learning more from you and working with you on that issue.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you. Congratulations. I am beyond thrilled that you're going to be serving on this commission. I think your resume and your experience and your interests are sorely needed and that we need more voices on these issues in the city. Every now and then, we hear a story about human trafficking. There's a newspaper story or a television report about somebody who's been identified and liberated from an experience of being held. And, you know, that's nice when we hear that story, but I think we all know that the vast majority of people are never discovered and spend years, if not lifetimes, in slavery. And I'm wondering if, I know you haven't even started yet, but are there things that other big-city police departments have been able to do to help identify this problem that we haven't done yet that maybe we should be doing?
Well, Los Angeles, like other main ports of entry for trafficking victims, has a task force, a law enforcement task force that involves federal law enforcement as well. And so, and Los Angeles has, I think that's really terrific. There are other cities perhaps where training is more institutionalized within local law enforcement, and maybe that's a lesson that can be learned. But I know that there's serious commitment among Los Angeles local law enforcement to identify and investigate trafficking cases. And, you know, I think that increased training, though, is probably something that we could bring to the law enforcement here.
Every year or two, I can't remember which, every city employee needs to do a training in ethics, needs to do a training in sexual harassment. If there's a training that would be valuable for people to undergo periodically in order to identify the signs or things we should be looking for, and that's something you're interested in championing from your perch, I'd be more than willing to help on that.
Thank you, that's great.
Great, thank you very much. And I'd just like to add a comment as well, and having sat down and talked to you and read all about your experience and your interest, you do bring a breath of fresh air and knowledge and experience, one that's desperately needed, quite frankly, on the commission in this area particularly. And as we see some of the issues that we're battling right now in the department and the city of Los Angeles, particularly as it pertains to undocumented immigrants not reporting crimes, you know, we've launched this See Something, Say Something campaign. We need to do an extensive effort and bring that out to different communities and not just See Something, Say Something, but See Something, Say Something without any repercussions. That a lot of people here in Los Angeles don't say anything out of fear that something will happen to them or that they would be deported. And because of that issue alone, we're seeing hit-and-runs up significantly. We're now the capital of hit-and-run incidents, and they're not accidents, these are crimes. People are getting killed every week in hit-and-run accidents that we are no longer calling accidents. But with that, in all types of crimes, we've got to make sure that we come up with some type of public service announcements, campaign. We've got to go out there and work with the community and come up with policies that ensure that we spread that word, that people are protected when they come out and report a crime and they see something. They need to say something. We need the help. And so I know that you'll bring a lot to the table in that regard. And it's not about softening policies because less people are saying something. And I think we've made some grave mistakes, quite frankly, in the city in going in that direction personally. And I think what we need to do is launch a massive effort to ensure more people are speaking out when they see something. And we had a woman in council the other day because of a hit-and-run on Ventura Boulevard that was, it brought the entire council to complete silence and tears to hear that she lost a loved one and they have no leads in the incident. tears to hear that she lost a loved one and they have no leads in the incident. And we're hearing this almost every day. So we've got to do something. And I welcome you to the commission. And without objection, congratulations. That'll be a unanimous support.
Thank you so much.
See you soon in council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three. Mr. Soboroff, come on up. You're the next contestant on the Police Commission.
Item three, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Mr. Steve Soboroff to the Board of Police Commissioners.
And if you can tell us which typewriter you used to type out your resume. A man with the most incredible typewriter collection in the history of the world. You're no stranger to the city of Los Angeles, and you're certainly no stranger to serving on commissions. And your experience and vision and passion is really unparalleled. And you've continued to do so much. And I've known you for many years. You've been a great friend. It was a pleasure to sit down with you and talk about your ideas as well. And I'd mention that none of these candidates or commissioners have probably slept since they received the call from the mayor's office. Steve not only has not slept, he's kept everybody else awake by constantly setting up meetings and calling everyone. And when he...
I've slept. I just keep this with me. This is the org chart.
The org chart. Keeps the org chart under his pillow.
My wife has left the bed, but the org chart is there.
So, good morning. Welcome.
Thanks. What I want to tell you a little bit about myself is that it all started for me when I was in college. I joined Big Brothers. That was 1968. That was one of the first interracial assignments in America. They didn't, even though Big Brothers started in the late 1800s, they didn't do cross-matching at all. Today, so it's, what, 45 years later, my little brother's 54 years old. He's a grandfather to two kids. So we've kept in touch. And I think that was my first hard experience in opening up to different worlds of different people. The second thing is Expo Center, which is going on now. Expo Center...
They're playing your song.
Yeah. Expo Center is a facility down in Exposition Park that served 200,000 people and wasn't, didn't reach its full, wasn't reaching its full potential. And we put together a new board and worked with council members and every, we're very inclusive and very open, very fishbowl-ish, I guess. And if the Police Commission isn't fishbowl-ish, I don't know what is. And in two years, we've increased the number of people served to 900,000. So those are, that's my latest and greatest. This is a job that I asked for. I wasn't recruited for. I asked for. And the mayor and his crew said, let's go do it.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Before I open it up for questions, I didn't know the story about the Big Brothers that you got involved in, and I want to applaud you. That's actually the first thing that turned my life around. I was a little brother.
I know.
And...
A lot of little brothers went on to be Big Brothers.
Yeah.
I went on to be chair of Big Brothers of Los Angeles, which was founded by Walt Disney. And they had a policy at that time, and this was many years ago, that I was chair, where if you were gay, you were categorically eliminated from being a Big Brother. And so it was the first thing I wanted to do was reverse that. And was told by many, many of the people on the board that had been there, it was founded by Walt Disney and Meredith Wilson from 1955, hey, just leave it alone. Let me be president for two years. Leave it alone because we're worried about losing support. We're worried about losing, I said, you got the wrong guy to leave it alone. And we changed that policy, one of the first in the country to change that policy. We didn't lose one nickel donations, and the agency's four times larger now.
Well, ours, our relationship is now 32 years. And...
Good.
My big brother, Ed Crew, who lives back east now, we still talk all the time, still good friends.
I got in more trouble than my little brother did.
So, yeah, no, thank you. Ms. Martinez?
I have no question.
Mike?
Oh, I've got some grave concerns about this nominee, Mr. Chair.
Used to rollerblade together, right? Dennis Boardwalk.
I've known Steve a very long time. He's a constituent. He's a friend. He's a mentor. He's as good as they come. I do have one concern, though. Is Patty okay with this?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You have given huge chunks of your life and your time to the city of Los Angeles repeatedly, and I just want to make sure that this is okay.
My wife, like every other citizen of Los Angeles and like every police officer, wants to feel safe and respected. So she's on the team.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. Joe?
Mr. Soboroff, I don't know if you remember this, but I do, and I'll never forget it. The first time I met you, I was a rec assistant at Bogdanovich Park. You were a wrecking park commissioner then. And we asked you to come to speak throughout the first pitch. And I was assigned by the park director to escort you. It was a perfect strike. But I was assigned to escort you to your seat. And that walk from the gym to the field, you made me feel important as a rec assistant. And you didn't have to do that, and I'll never forget that. And for you to now sit in this Police Commission where you value respect, you value relationships, you value the importance of giving back to the community, and more so now, you're going to have, you're going to be the Citizen Oversight Committee of running the best police department in the world. I'm comfortable with that. And I'm thankful for you. I'm thankful of the mayor for putting you in this position of leadership. And I so look forward, we look so forward to working with you.
Thank you. And I ask you to return the favor to me and make me feel important every once in a while.
Sir, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I look forward to working with you and getting to know you a little bit. I haven't yet had the privilege that my colleagues have had, so I look very forward to that. And I'm, you know, some of us are still very new, so we're still learning the ropes. So may I please have a copy of that organizational chart that you pulled out of your pocket? That might come in handy.
On the website, though, LAPD has a great, it has a, you know, this is a high-tech mayor. This is a great website. But I'll give you a copy.
Thank you.
Not mine. Mine has notes.
Okay. And maybe those notes will come in handy, too. And congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks.
And without objection, that'll be a unanimous vote. And by the way, on the top of that organizational chart is the Police Commission. So keep that in mind.
And my wife is...
Oh, she's, make no mistake, yes. I know that well.
Okay.
All right. Congratulations. We'll see you in council momentarily.
Item four. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Ms. Paula Madison to the Board of Police Commissioners for the term ending June 30, 2015, who filled a vacancy resulting from the removal of Mr. John Mack.
Ms. Madison, good morning.
Good morning.
And let me welcome you as well in saying what an honor and a privilege it has been to sit down with you, to get to know you, to read your incredible history and resume, which is a book in itself. You bring so many various things and experiences and different perspectives to this commission, which is truly needed. I'm proud to support you and have gotten to know you just a little bit so far and look forward to working with you. But with that, if you can open it up and tell us a little bit about yourself as well and why you want to do this.
Thank you. Well, I would like to say, first of all, that I'm honored and humbled in, you know, following my fellow candidates. I kind of feel like I'm bringing up the rear because listening to them, I want to get to know them. I know Steve a little bit, but this is such a huge and immense honor for me and my family. A little bit about me, I've lived in Los Angeles since the year 2000. I am originally a native of Harlem. Los Angeles is my home. I grew up in New York on welfare, the child of immigrants. My father was actually deported. And I happened to have, in the past year, worked really hard to find my family in China. My grandfather was Chinese and immigrated from China to Jamaica. So I have the history of, I am the 151st generation of the Lo Clan from Shenzhen, China. And it's all documented. We go back to 1006 B.C., which quite honestly blew me away. But the legacy of my family in China is more detailed than the legacy of my family that would have come from Jamaica and therefore Africa. I know that my background in Africa is, we are Akan, otherwise known as Ashanti. So I have these two amazing legacies that sort of all wrap up and wind up in me. In Los Angeles, I retired at the age of 58, a few years ago, a few years ago, from NBC Universal.
Not that long ago.
No, three years ago, actually, from NBC Universal, where I ended my career with NBC Universal and General Electric as the Executive Vice President for Diversity for the corporation. Prior to that, I was the President and General Manager for KNBC, Channel 4, here in L.A., and also had the privilege and honor of being responsible in running the two Telemundo stations, KVEA and KWHY. And then before that, I was the Vice President and News Director for WNBC in New York. So I come from a history of, a work history of having been a working journalist for many years. And then I ran television stations for a few years. And presently, the job, I guess, that I have, although I have retired, I am the CEO of the Los Angeles Sparks. My family purchased the Sparks and the story, yay, go Sparks. The story about that is that when I was working at KNBC, the CEO of NBC Universal asked me to take on the role full-time as the Chief Diversity Officer for the corporation. And my response was, no, I'm a P&amp;L girl. I like to make, you know, money delivered to the bottom line. I don't like being a consultant. I'm not really good at that. I like people to do what I tell them to do. So he said, Paula, think about it. Almost simultaneously, my family had been offered the opportunity to invest in the Los Angeles Sparks. And we said, no, let's stay in our lane. There are businesses that we know, sports management is not really one. And then unfortunately, a media professional referred to the Rutgers Women's Basketball Team in a very unkind manner. That was Don Imus. And that prompted me to do two things. One, I had intended to retire early. I'd always intended to retire at the age of 58 because I wanted to do what I wanted to do. I decided that I was not going to retire, that I was actually going to stay at NBC Universal because the fact that something like that could occur in this amazing corporation was very disturbing to me. And I knew that we therefore had a lot of work to do. And the second thing was that I went back to my family and said, hey, you guys want to buy a basketball team? So I went to the little kids in my family, and three 14-year-olds and an eight-year-old. And I said, are you guys interested in owning a sports franchise? They were like, yeah. And I said, okay, how about we buy the L.A. Sparks? They were like, yeah. I said, it's a women's basketball team? Yeah. So that's how we ended up. And my family expected that I would have then retired to run the Sparks. I did not retire. I stayed on at NBC Universal. And I would say that in the 22 years that I spent with the company, probably the last three years were the most eye-opening and most rewarding. Because being the Executive Vice President for Diversity gave me a window into workplace issues regarding certainly hiring and promotion and LGBT issues. It also gave me an opportunity to help set policy for the corporation. And with that, that role brought with it a vice presidency at General Electric. 320,000 employees, 200 VPs, eight of us African-American. It put me in a very small group. And getting a window into such a huge organization and an institution that is not easy to turn on a dime, but needed to be updated. It needed a different perspective. It needed to give voice to the disenfranchised, which you wouldn't ordinarily think would happen in a major corporation. But just like, I think, the city of Los Angeles, there are voices here that really do need to be heard. When I first arrived, and I was mentioning this to Councilmember England the other day, that when I first arrived, one of the first things I did was I spent a couple of days on Skid Row. I didn't sleep on Skid Row, but I went up and down Skid Row. Because I think that one of the things that you have to know is in order to understand what the quality of life issues are in a community, you have to go to those who are the neediest. And having grown up on welfare in New York and knowing full well that if not for the services of the city of organizations like Sandra's, those kinds of organizations are the ones that supported me when I was a kid. Those organizations are necessary. When I was a kid, we were in Harlem pretty much afraid of the police. But as a journalist and as a working reporter, I came to know better both sides of the issue. And what I really am so honored and thrilled about is that the mayor plucked me out of millions of citizens. I still don't quite know how or why, but...
We do.
I mentioned that family legacy because I don't operate in a singular fashion. I understand that, you know, to those who much is given, much is required. So when my husband asked me, after my conversation with the mayor, and I called him and I said, baby, guess what? And he was happy. And then I got home, he said, Paula, did you think you should have discussed this with me? And I said, well, I knew you would agree. And he said, well, I do. But do you think you should have discussed it with me? I said, well, I'm not the 24-hour-sleep-on-it person. And I retired early so that I could do what I thought was important to me. I will tell you right now that without question, without question, this is the most important opportunity and assignment I have ever been given. And I promise you, yeah, I'm one of the people who hasn't been sleeping much. But I take so seriously the opportunity to partner with my fellow candidates and to work really, really, really hard on behalf of the city, which is my home. And I really want to get to know all of you and what issues you believe are the important ones that we should focus on. And we, my fellow candidates, we have our own interests and interests and issues that we want to bring forward. And I will tell you that for me, this is a dream come true. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to tell you a little bit about me. I have so much more. But that'll wait till we meet each other one-on-one.
Thank you, Paula. And just so you all know, when Paula came into my office, I didn't know. I had no idea. But yet I had, in my lobby, displayed a Sparks poster and Sparks flyers. And had no idea. And just because I'm a fan. But that was ironic.
You had an Endeavor poster when Steve came in, didn't you?
I did. I did. I did. Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
I'm going to be booted off this committee.
We need to shut your mic off. And colleagues, you can see clearly why, when I opened up this meeting, I said, we have some incredible, soon-to-be, very soon-to-be commissioners before us. That when I sat down with each and every one, I was in awe. Because what the mayor has done is a great thing, to go out there and personally hand-pick, not politically pick, but hand-pick, an incredible panel that is going to do such a great job, that has just a breadth of experience and passion, that's so diversified, that comes from different places and life experiences, but yet has given back in each of their own way to this city over the course of their life. And now are willing to step up yet again and completely focus on the most important function of this city in public safety. My hat's off to our mayor for selecting this panel. With that, Ms. Martinez?
I'm just in awe with all of you. Thank you so much for agreeing to serve the residents of the city of Los Angeles. And I really look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike, I shut your mic. I shut your magic mic off.
Ms. Madison, all I got to say is, damn, that was impressive.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Madison, thank you for your commitment to serving our police department. You have an inspiring story, and I think this police department truly needs you and needs your expertise. At a time where, you know, hard news sells, we need to really focus on the great things that's happening within the police department. Tomorrow at Narbonne High School, the Watts Bears will be playing at 9:30. It's a team of a young...
It's a team of young kids, kids from Watts, being coached by LAPD officers from the developments. I mean, and I guarantee you, Channel 4, Channel 7, Channel 2 are not going to be there to cover it. So with your expertise and your knowledge to bring in our media partners to promote the great things that are happening within the LAPD, please take that role. And we owe it to our police department, and we know you're going to shine on this commission, and I'm glad to support, I'm happy to support you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Madison, it's so great to hear your story, and I love two things specifically, that you came out of retirement to do something that you love because you were called upon to do so. So there's something very, I don't know, symbolic of that, I think it's destiny. And I love that you feel it's such a great honor for you to, and it's such an important task, maybe the most important task that you've done. So, I mean, that's terrific, and I think you represent what's best in Los Angeles, and you bring to light the fact that behind every facade that we all have is an incredibly deep story. And I think you touch upon that. So I think that the perspectives that you'll bring to this commission are priceless. So, thank you, I look very forward to getting to know you.
Thank you so much.
So the honor to say that with, it'll be unanimous from this commission, that we appoint you and approve you as well. We'll move you, all four of you, over to council, which we'll see you in about 20 minutes. I do know that we get into a little more conversation and have a little more time and opportunity here in committee than we do in council, while the president likes to keep it light, tight and bright. We will bring each one of you up to the table, though, for an introduction, and look forward to working with each and every... We're, I think you've heard it all here, which is rare, that we're so honored where we have unanimously just a panel of professionals and experts and truly great people. And so congratulations to each and every one of you and to all of us as well for having you. With that, that'll conclude the Public Safety Committee. We adjourn.
So, Rob, nice to see you.